All right, we'll have a brief moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to call that meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Please let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county secretary sitting in for our administrator, who's on vacation, Colleen Coon. Colleen?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 35 exoneration listings for $15,597.15. There are three requests to create statements for $483.80. There are also corrections that need to be made to the June 16th, 2021, and July 21st, 2021 exonerations. We have minutes from July 21st, 2021. Vouchers, General County, $45,531.72. 911 in the amount of $85,994.47. Chestnut Ridge Park, $151. Camp Muffley, $13,652.37. Mason Dixon Park, $1,054.49. Recreation levy, $535,631. Assessor's valuation, $2,827.40. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $5,938.47. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $6,168.69. 911, $215.24. Camp Muffley, $373.2. Mason Dixon Park, $45.35. Assessor's valuation, $95.45 for a voucher total of $2,501,334.21. We have budget revisions for state approval for the general fund carryover. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website, and we have fiduciary orders for July 28th, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a second. Point of discussion, you guys do note that the general fund carryover budget that needs to be submitted to the auditor's office is included. And what this is, is the adjustments to reflect the increase in the carryover to 1.9 million. So the previous budget carryover was 11 million, is now 12,955,564. And just a quick summary of where we're budgeting these, and if you guys have anything I'm missing, please chime in. We have 70,000 additional as being budgeted under account 401 for 20,000 for contracted service increase and another 50K for miscellaneous contributions. The sheriff's tax office, account 404. We missed one vacant position in the budgeting process, so that's another 55,295. Insurance programs, additional amount for liability insurance of 94,011. Other buildings, these are utilities for community centers and miscellaneous, and all these were previously paid out of coal severance fund, which has pretty much dried up, so that's 50,000. We have an economic development fund, another 500,000 is being added to that, so that fund sits at approximately a million dollars. Previously, a lot of these items were allocated coal, so we have some adjustments due to some other accounts. Dog warden training for a humane officer, that's $2,000. Mental health, mental health other wasn't budgeted, that's an additional 5,000. We have the park supervisor budget, which is, we'll be approving the budget later, that's 93,375. 4-H program, that's for the new manager of the extension building, plus some other various expenses for that building that we had been planning. That's an increase of 242, 242,000. And then other building, we had to move over the remainder of the Daybrook Tower, which wasn't all paid out of last year as we expected, so that's an increase in that account of about 50,000. And then there's a catch-all, there's an addition, because our contingency account is already fully funded, we have another 342,000, it's under financial stabilization, which is a contingency account. So Tom, Jeff, do you guys have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. Well, having making that distinction, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Any separate fiduciary items? Introduction to new employees, personnel changes. Sheriff Palmer? Chief Deputy Ralston? Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The sheriff seeks your approval of the appointment of Chad Summers as a new deputy sheriff with our department with an effective start date of August 1st. He is an 18-year, or was an 18-year employee of Mylan Pharmaceuticals, most recently as a quality and assurance supervisor. So the timing works out well for us and for him to be able to come aboard on August 1st.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Welcome to the county. The commission is fairly, or very aware of the Mylan closure, and I'm glad that we can, one by one, help the people that are affected by that. So I apologize, I'm sorry for that, but we're glad to have you.
Do we need official votes?
We should vote.
Yeah. First and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now you're allowed.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Okay, next is MJ Zink, Executive Director, Montague County Youth Services. You want to go ahead and read those, Colleen?
Well, she has, she had had two girls that she wanted to introduce today. Desiree Black actually pulled out from the position, but she is hiring Brooke Riggelman as a part-time relief worker, not eligible for benefits. Her rate of pay is starting at $13.20 an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other positions? Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. And I'll open up the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wish to address the commission, raise their hand, please come forward. Thank you. And state your name for the record, and how can we help you?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Dottie Berger, I live in Morgantown, and I'm here on behalf of our local NAACP. We would like to get information from the commission on the disbursement of funds provided to the county for COVID relief in the American Rescue Plan. Over 20 million, I think, of which half should have arrived by May. We understand the funds can be spent on pandemic expenses, lost revenue, investments in infrastructure, for example, water, sewer, broadband. Commissioner Bloom said that you will go through a process a while back. He said that he was looking for really solid infrastructure developments. The city of Morgantown has announced its processes for its 11 million and change. We are here to ask that you remember the deserving sections of society when you make your decisions about solid infrastructure. We ask that, one, you would inform the public about the process you would use; two, devote one commission meeting to get ideas from the public; three, announce the meeting and the call for ideas well in advance; and four, go through your process, and Godspeed. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else in the public like to address the commission? Go ahead and close the public portion. Colleen Coon, grants. None? Okay, next item on the agenda, correspondence.
We received a notice from the West Virginia Development Office regarding the amended application for the Mon County Redevelopment District Number One, Star City. We also have received the fourth quarter levy report from Bow Park. We received another notice from the Health Department regarding the Camp Muffley Swimming Pool Plan Approval. And then we also received another notice from the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources regarding the Camp Muffley Swimming Pool Approval. So we have all those. And then yesterday, we received a letter from Judge Starcher, just advising us that he is still around, he's just had some medical issues, but as soon as he recovers from them, he will be working on the Arthur Scottschul State.
Anything else?
No.
Jeff?
Just, we received, each commissioner received a letter from a fifth grader at Mason Dixon Elementary, Emma Saulers.
Do you want to go ahead and read the letter?
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Oh, sure. It just says, "My name is Emma Saulers, I'm a fifth grade student at Mason Dixon Elementary. I'm a member of the Wadestown Busy B4H group, and for one of my projects this year, I've been learning about West Virginia history. One of the lessons in my project book was about state historical road markers. I decided I wanted to travel all around the county to see the markers. There are a lot of them missing, and I think they need to be replaced. If they're not fixed, eventually there won't be any left. There's a lot of history in our county, and if the signs are missing, then people cannot learn about it." She goes on to just indicate that, how many were missing. So what we'd like to do is probably ask Ms. Saulers to come in and give a presentation to the commission at a future date, and then we'll look into this matter further. And I think I speak for all of us, we say we really appreciate our interest in this issue, and I think it's something that's important, and we're going to try to address it.
That's really neat, when you get a letter like this from a young member of our--
I was impressed. I did not know there were markers.
And we honestly don't know who's in charge of them.
Right, so that's, I think it'd be great, yes.
We'll have a meeting with the DOH on the 18th, maybe we can ask them to give us some information, so we at least know who's responsible.
I think our local historical society probably has something to do with it.
Okay.
Any other?
No.
I do want to note one thing, I received an invite, and you guys will probably receive it, for the Health Net is dedicating a new aircraft, serving West Virginia W Medicine and patients throughout northern West Virginia, and that's invitations for Wednesday, August 4th. Obviously, it's a Wednesday, so it's unlikely I'll be able to attend, but I did want to note that invitation. All right, unfinished business, there is none. New business. To consider for approval, the county commission, by the county commission, a term sheet proposed, presented to the county commission by MVB Bank Incorporated in connection with the issuance by the county commission of its tax increment revenue and refunding bonds to be designated the County Commission of Montague County Tax Increment Revenue and Refunding Bond Series 2021A for Morgantown Industrial Park Phase III Project, and the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed 10 million. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion of second. Tom, do you want to come forward and explain on behalf of the bond counsel for the commission?
Happy to do that, thank you. Tom Aiman, I assume this is on?
Yes, it's on for the--
Tom Aiman with Steptoe &amp; Johnson, the bond counsel for the county commission for the Morgantown Industrial Park Tiff financing project. So you'll recall, the commission previously adopted a bond authorizing order relating to this funding. We're calling it Phase III at the Morgantown Industrial Park. It's a continuation of the development that the commission started there back in, I guess, 2008, 2009. So we're continuing the phases, basically infrastructure build-out in the park and site development work to attract additional tenants in the park. N Route Properties LLC is the developer, represented by Mr. Glenn Adrian, who's here today as well. So MVB Bank holds the existing bonds, 2017 bonds. Those bonds were amended in last year to add an additional $1.5 million to pay for various studies. We're now, Glenn is now advancing additional projects in the district, in particular, one large project that has infrastructure needs. Excuse me. This funding would provide the infrastructure and site development needs for this additional large project that's been targeted. MVB Bank will continue to be the bondholder, but they are increasing the amount available on the funding by $5.3 million. So it would pay off the existing bonds to 2017 as amended and provide an additional $5.3 million in funding for the needs in the park, in particular, this large project that's been identified. MVB has provided a term sheet for that funding that basically provides all the material terms of the bond financing. It will again be a private placement. Cruze &amp; Associates is representing the commission as placement agent for this additional financing. We actually have a closing date targeted for this Friday, July 30. Interest rate will be the same as it has been for the existing bonds, the 5.15%. The commission previously extended the term of the district by five years to go the full 30 years, it was originally a 25-year district. So this funding will take advantage of the additional five years, extend the maturity. The security is solely the tax increment revenue, so no funds of the county are obligated or committed in any way, other than the tax increment revenues and the Tiff fund. They'll be structured on a drawdown basis, so the additional, we'll fund at closing to pay off the existing, of the existing bonds, the closing costs. There's a project fund requisition at closing, an amount of about 400,000 to pay for engineering and various expenses that have incurred up to this point in time. The remainder of the 5.3 will be available on a drawdown basis going forward to pay costs as needed. So interest only accrues on that amount as it's drawn and expended, which is a very advantageous structuring item. These bonds will have semi-annual interest payments, and then the principal will be paid down annually on June 1, with all surplus tax increment revenues available after paying the scheduled interest. That's another very advantageous structuring point. So those are the material terms. There's also a budget attached to the term sheet that details an estimate as to how the additional 5.3 million will be drawn down over a period of time that will expand, extend to about April of '22. $4,150,000 estimated to be expended in 2021 through December, and then $1,150,000 through April of 2022. Then there's a portion of the budget here that shows the comprehensive budget for the overall project, this large tenant that's trying to be attracted. The total project budget for that of 11.8 million. This existing Tiff will provide about 5.1 million of that, and then 6.7 million would need to come from other funding sources. So that's what's contemplated by this term sheet, if the commission were to decide to approve that and approve Commissioner Sikora to execute that, and then deliver it to MVB Bank, coupled with the prior bond authorizing order, we would then close on this financing this Friday.
Glenn, would you like to add anything? Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Tom, for that, as always, very in-depth description. Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider for adoption by the county commission an order which would approve an amendment to Star City Project Number One for the existing redevelopment district known as the County Commission of Montague County Redevelopment District Number One, Star City, to facilitate development of additional phases of the project plan by allowing the town of Star City and/or the county commission to market and sell certain property located along Boyer's Avenue in Star City and other real property which may be acquired in the future by the town of Star City or the county commission for purposes of redevelopment or rehabilitation and related matters. Do I have a motion to--
So moved.
Second.
And just for clarification, Star City sent this to us through Tom Aiman to make sure that we could do this, so that was their request?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
Tom, do we need any further explanation?
I think you guys, we've covered this in prior discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve proposal from Schindler Elevator Corporation for an annual preventative maintenance contract with respect to elevator equipment located in Montague County Justice Center.
Move to postpone.
Second, we need some more.
Okay, any discussion? Basically, we had this on our agenda last week, and it was supposed to be removed until we requested by our facilities director to put it back on, so we're not ready for that yet. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of a lease agreement with Montague County Health Department for fleet vehicles. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion, this is a lease agreement that we signed every year for the consideration of, I believe, $10. It basically allows the Health Department to then therefore be covered under our insurance for vehicles. So it's just a simple agreement that we put in place and we renew every year, so. We have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Consider for approval requisition number 12 for the Star City Project Number One, Series 2012, Tiff Administrative Expense Fund. This is for legal fees to Steptoe &amp; Johnson in an amount of $3,704.54. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tom, you'll get paid. Consideration to approve a request by Main Street Morgantown for the use of Courthouse Square. This request is for October 16th, 2021, and it's for their hops on the Mon program.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There was a second, any discussion? Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consideration to approve appointments to the Montague County Transit Authority and Montague County Board of Health. Let me take each one of these separately. The Transit Authority is Jeremy Evans, and he's replacing Clement Solomon, who moved out of the area. What's the will of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second one is Donna Tennant, and this is a reappointment to the Mon County Health Department. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a second? Okay, I will second that. We have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Consideration of appointment of a county commissioner to the Runway Extension Development Team. If we get a motion, I'll go ahead and explain--
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The Runway Extension Development Team is actually a, it's a project, or it's a, really controlled by the city, for the purpose of the runway is their project. I, as a member of the Development Authority, have sat on the Runway Extension Development Committee. Previously, Eldon sat on it, so when I came on commission, I did the same thing. So we, I represent the MCDA and unofficially the commission. Basically, what we're doing is, I'm giving up my Development Authority seat to allow Russ Rogerson a vote on the Runway Extension Development Team. And I think that, to me, it may not seem like a big deal, but with everything we wanted to do with the area partnership, this shows the cities and the commission and the Development Authorities really pleasure or happiness with how Russ Rogerson and the partnership is working. And I think the fact that it was the request of the city that we actually give Russ a vote on that committee speaks volumes to the work being done by Russ. So it essentially formally appoints me so that Russ can have a Development Authority seat. Now, this still has to be approved by the city, because they'll go through the city and they'll approve it. So we're just crossing that step. So once we approve it, and then the city approves it, then it would actually go forward.
And for clarification, last night at the committee of the whole, Emily Moserelli explained this, so by us passing it--
Oh, good.
I believe they've already have it on, Kim's here, but they have it on their agenda, so they explained everything of what was going on. So it's working together, yes.
So anything else you need to add to that?
No.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your consideration. To consider for approval the creation of budgets for the extension services and 4-H Center Building Management and Director of Parks. Do I have a motion to--
Proudly move forward.
And we have a second. As I mentioned before, in the carryover monies that we are apportioning, we are fully funding these, or fully allocating these budgets, and really excited about the steps going forward--
Yes.
--to see both of these individuals embracing their job and doing some wonderful things for the citizens of this county. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Consideration to approve the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2020, as prepared by Perry &amp; Associates. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, I'm not going to go into a lot of boring detail about the audit. We have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Though it is, just as all years, it's, there's nothing remarkable about it, so. Is any other new business, Colleen? Okay. Next item on the agenda is reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors. Would anybody like to speak? Ken, would you like to speak on behalf of the city? Not to put you on the spot.
You're well aware, what's happening?
All right, thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody. County commissioners. Jeff?
Just back from vacation, getting back up from under it. I noticed we've had a spike in numbers again, not alarmingly so yet in Mon County, but those that haven't been vaccinated, please, they're available everywhere, please get vaccinated and try to stop this from escalating again. And that's about it.
All right, thank you. Tom?
Sure, I'll make up for Jeff not having too much. I have a number of issues, quick ones. First of all, let me distribute this to you. This was, we had a meeting, a board meeting of the visitmountaineercountry.com, CVB, and we did discuss the Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund. We kicked it off last week. We already have four applications. You can see 171 people had already reviewed it, which is what we really like to see, an average of seven minutes and 40 seconds. So people are actually reading it, looking at it. We're very excited, and we're hoping to move forward on this, and there's a five-member board on this, no county commissioner is on it. Terry Cutrate from the CVB is one of the five members, so she represents the CVB. So that's exciting news. Second, this morning, Jimmy Smith could not be here with us, but he did want us to announce that the tower has started to rise. So people have been wanting in the western end, the tower is being built, but the more important issue is US Cellular did contact them and said they want to be on the tower, which will then put help for cellular information and also broadband and other situations out on the western end. So that's a really good, exciting news. If you didn't hear, you heard Sean mention, the public needs to know, we are going to have a meeting with the DOH on August 18th at 1:00. Again, this is like a, at a work session, and that's where we discuss issues. And I will bring up the one issue that I'm sure all the commissioners have gotten. Yes, I've probably received dozens of complaints of the median and the entranceway coming in in Star City where the growth is enormous, it hasn't been cut, and the joke is that someone saw a deer down there bedding in the evening. So we have passed it on, but it is something that I think it's a concern all three of us have. I don't know what's going on, and one of the questions we are going to ask, what is going on with the cutting and the canopy cutting this year? It just doesn't seem to be upkeep as it was before, so we will be talking about that.
And the ditching.
And the ditch, yeah, and the ditching. Let's see, the boom, boom, boom. Yeah, the final thing is an issue that, of course-- Yeah, the final thing is an issue that, of course, I was on the radio yesterday, and the county commissioners knew I was going to be on it, and unfortunately, Mylan is closing. We knew it was happening, but I want it clear that in the reports that you've received from outside of Montague County, it's all this doom and gloom. It's all this, we'll never make it after that, the tsunami effect. And maybe 10 years ago, that might have been effect, but this county commission several years ago saw this. You look at what's going on, Glenn Adrian, you know, and the industrial park and the growth out there. You look at that we're looking to build a second interchange. You look at the Ridgewood, Richwood Development in the city of Morgantown and the Morgantown Airport Industrial Park. We saw this coming. Now, will it resolve the issues that, which is basically a punch in the stomach, as I say? No. But we're not going to sit back. We have an unbelievable business community. We have a medical community, Mon Health, WVU Hospitals. We have growth again in the industrial park, chemical construction, and one, as we're speaking right now, as I like to say, we're signing the papers right now, that hopefully will be announced with a new factory coming. Yes, there are concerns, but I want it very clear that the three county commissioners, the work with the city of Morgantown and other cities, we are not going to sit back, and we're probably the only community that could take this punch and move forward. Yes, it's going to be difficult. We're going to continue to work to have portals through, you know, map program and trying to find those jobs for these individuals, and we're trying to bring in new people. But as I finally said, I believe Mon County is going to be the phoenix, and out of this ashes, we will be stronger, more diversified, and working together. And I think that's an important message that we need to get across to this community, and I'll leave with that.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, we had our broadband subteam meeting in the morning, then we had our red team meeting, and then in the afternoon, I had a broadband call, and then I had a dilapidated property discussion with Mayor Celine and a number of Morgantown city residents about a property that's in the county, but a but's about 10, 10 houses. So we're actually going to address that concern this week. Friday, I had a broadband call, two broadband calls, one at 9:00 in the morning and one at 2:00 in the morning, so it's a lot of activity going on regarding our initiative. Saturday, I was down at the closing of the MHS Band Camp. Jeff thanked, thanked Misty for accommodating the school. That's the first time they used the park as a band camp, and actually, I think it was kind of a neat thing, because generally, they go to Jackson's Mill, and it's a huge, huge logistical nightmare to get enough chaperones, people that can take, take their time off from a job and go to Jackson Mill to chaperone overnight for kids. So the biggest thing to manage was the overnight factor, so that takes that away. So I believe it was a very successful camp in Camp Muffley, and please forward, thanks on to Misty, and I hope they consider, you know, coming back. It's certainly easier on the parents, having the kids sleep, sleep at home this weekend. Even the band director said that they seemed to be a little bit more attentive, because they were getting their rest at night, so again, thank, thank Misty. Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, I was at County Commission Association of West Virginia meeting, and it's, that meeting serves as our annual required training under the West Virginia State Auditor's Office, so got back from that yesterday. Today, we have, I'm sorry, missed, missed up here. Tomorrow, I have a Health Department meeting. We have a jail bill meeting, which I believe, Tom, will you be going to?
Yes, I will be going to it.
And Jeff? Okay. And then I have that dilapidated discussion where I have two members of the Health Department and our county litter officer that are going to meet with me to go, go investigate this house. And I have an extension building meeting with our new venue manager, so I'm meeting her with an entity interested in exploring options for the kitchens, and then after that, we're also meeting with the Mon County Fair. Rob Maxwell, he wants to talk about the animal sale that they're going to be having in August, which I believe they announced on the radio this past week. He had his kids go on the radio and talk about it, so a number of good things in regarding that building. Friday, we have staff reports, and Saturday, I'd like to point out the Dell Miller Field Dedication that will be at Mylan Park, and hopefully, depending on my schedule, I'd like to be able to participate in that, to again, thank Dell Miller for all he's done for this community, especially in the ways of sports and baseball. In general, I sent out a doodle poll for a broadband meeting with the municipalities. It's looking like that meeting will probably be on the 11th in the early afternoon, so hopefully, we can, Kim, if you get your counselors to make sure they respond, and I was asked all, all the mayors to get their counselors to respond, and hopefully, we'll have participation from all municipalities, as well as the Board of Education and other miscellaneous community leaders. But that meeting, as all of our meetings are, is a public meeting, so once we, once we have it nailed down as far as the time and date, we'll let you know. In regards to the numbers, yes, we'd be remiss if we didn't point out that the numbers are, are trending up. I still get daily report, or weekly reports from the Health Department, and the numbers from 719, which is 3.7 per 100,000 citizens infected, has now increased. Yesterday's number was 7.3. And across the age groups, the good news is 75-plus, they've had, they're at zero, so they're not being infected, and those are our most vulnerable, and 65 to 74 is the, is the lowest other group, so that's only a 3.9. But the one of concern is the 6 to 17 group, which is at 16.9. So that one is driving, is driving the numbers up. And 18 to 24 is at 6.5. 25 to 34 is at 6.3. 35 to 44 is 9.3, and 45 to 54 is 9.1. So the numbers are going up across all groups, so I do, it's been a long, tiring process, but we're not out of it yet, and the commission is certainly paying attention to the CDC guidance and any guidance that comes out of the state. So we just ask that people to remember the three W's. Wash, wash your hands, wear your distance, and where you're not sure, wear a mask. So thanks for your consideration or listening to our appeals. So having said that, I think that's everything. Anything else to?
No.
Do you want to add?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.